Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Okay guys, you're up.
All right, well first of all we have a guest here from our new parking rent director who wants to address council. So Craig is going to speak to the council.
Yeah, I just wanted to formally introduce myself. My name's Chris Shepchik. I'm the new director. Over the last 14 years I was a program director for La Trobe Parks and Recreation. So I'm just excited to continue my recreation career with the city of La Trobe and the La Trobe School District. So I just wanted to introduce myself so everybody can get to see my face if you already know who I am. And just tell you I'm pleased for the opportunity to serve.
Well, we're happy to have you.
Thank you, Ruth.
It's always nice when we can promote somebody that knows the landscape, you know, after starting from scratch. So we're glad you were interested and glad it worked out. Anybody want to ask Craig any questions while I'm here? I'm sure we'll get there.
Well, I'm here for it.
Thank you.
All right, number two, we have two applications for the council to consider. Kathleen Kelly and Ed Kupickcheck, they're both, they're asking for to be on a place on the planning commission.
How many openings do we have?
Uh, there's two.
I thought there were two openings.
Yeah, there's two and plus.
There's two openings on a plane.
Is there an alternate room?
That's why I'm standing here in court.
Oh yeah. So there's two openings.
Okay, wonderful. Do they have, do they extend any resumes or letters or anything?
Uh, we've got a letter from both requesting, not a resume, just a little.
Did we get through, are they in my?
No, I haven't there.
Okay, can you put them in our package for Monday's meeting?
I will.
Thank you.
The one I just got recently has got the, they asked. All right, uh, yeah, so that's that. Um, we're looking to, there's a, Dolores Kelly at the 11th West Harrison Avenue is asking for a handicap parking spot. Um, she's provided some information, uh, you know, basically why she would need it. Um, again, it's up to council, but I know they want to grant that. Again, I could put, not put that in your bag, but also, so you have the same information I have.
Okay.
Okay? All right, um, next is, we've been asked by Trinity Lutheran Church to reserve two parking spots for the daycare program that they have there. Now, I know Anne is going to go take a look at the spots and she may want to provide this information. Jim will provide this information.
I think Jim looked at them.
Is that it?
I think Jim looked at them.
Oh, Jim looked at them. Somebody looked at them.
Anne?
Anne?
Well, there's a lot of parking around here.
So what are the spots specifically for?
Pardon me?
What are the spots specifically for?
Drop, I guess drop.
Drop off?
Yeah, drop off of the kids.
Plus they have private courts in here, so I, you know.
Are they paying for these?
Well, that's up to, that's up to what council decides and what will I do. Will we reserve spots or are it to be just open spots? I mean, you would have to do something because people pay for them.
Are we going to reserve it for a certain time, like whatever the pickup, the drop off is, or?
I am, I'm open for suggestions.
I guess the question is, what's their issue? I mean, if you're dropping off a kid at daycare, you don't really need to park. If you're working there, there's other options to parking. I mean, what's, what do they need them for?
Well, they probably have to park to take them in.
That's, they're, they're.
Yeah, but it's a drop off for less. But so they're, they're pulling up, they're parking, they're taking them in. So, I mean, you could probably have their parking zone. Jim?
What the problem is, is they're dropping them off in the alley and they're blocking the alley. And they're getting, uh, I guess they're getting some flack from people trying to get up and down the alley. But, I mean, it's a question of, you know, if you're going to get out of your car and walk your kid to the, to the door or walk them to the classroom, uh, there's, there's ample parking around that area. So I, I don't know. I, you know, it's up to council. I don't have a feeling either way. I just know there is, is, there is ample parking there.
Can't they just give a letter to all the parents saying not to drop them off in the alley?
I, I don't know if that's the only entrance to, to the specific daycare area or what. I'm not sure. I'm not sure why they, uh.
You can't block an alley anyhow, correct?
Well, they have. Well, alleys are for unloading and loading, but, I mean, you're, you're mixing apples and apples there with kids and cargo.
What have we done in the past? They have to pay for them.
Well, reserved spots they pay for.
So, I mean, if they're willing to pay for them.
We can talk about them.
But I also think.
I want to see if there's any interest at all with council.
I guess I'd want, I'd want a little more information. I'd want to know what the problem is. And why they can't, like, is, there's parking there, so why can't they just park and walk? I mean, I'm, I get so tired of hearing people that don't want to walk a half a block, you know?
Are the parking spots any closer than the alley drop off? Well, not, it's not really.
Both sides of Welton you can park.
So it's the same distance? It's the same distance? What's that? I'm just curious.
I, I don't know. Well, it could be about the same. You walked in and walked downstairs this way or walked in and walked downstairs the alley.
So it's in difference?
My, my feelings if they're, if you're going to grant that, they should pay for it because you are going to have to, um, you're going to have to give up spaces that create revenue. I mean, there's meter park now and there's lots. So, I mean, it's, it's not like over on Second Avenue where you did with the, uh, the daycare over there where you made a drop off lane because you're not sacrificing revenue, but.
Right, and, or they're talking about on, on Welton Street?
Right, that's what they're saying.
They want it right on Welton?
On Welton Street, yeah. I mean, I, I, what I can do is, I just want to see what council's opinion was. I can drop to them further and if they want to pay for a reserve, we've done some reserved parking spots recently. We can just see about that or, or see what they, really what they would look out for.
I'd just be curious as to, I mean, I guess what they're struggling with is they're not going to get tagged. So I don't think it's a question of having to put money in the meter to run their kids into school. But if they're dropping them off in the alley and that's the entrance, are they going to, are they going to park in these reserved spots and walk around the back?
Yeah.
Wayne, did they submit how many students they have?
Uh, no.
Because I'd be curious, I mean, if they have like seven students, that would be just ridiculous.
You know, I have no idea. I have no idea. All right, let me talk, let me talk a little further and then, I, I've got a text from a council once today. If they're going to use it, then they want, they want to be paid for it, reserve. Well, I'll, I'll.
So if they get those reserved spots in the alley, it's going to be off limits?
Right, they wouldn't, they shouldn't be delivering the block.
Yeah, I'm just wondering are they using the alley conveniently?
That's what they can do.
Are the spots are, spots are relevant?
Maybe.
That's why, is this a letter dedicated to parents? Are requesting these spaces or the?
This is from the director of children's services, so it's the director of the daycare. I'll find out. I, I just kind of want an idea what, you know, what council thought on that. All right, moving on. Resolution, appointing Michael Gray to work for me.
Is everyone known, Michael?
Nice to meet you, Michael. I met most of you, I think, last week with Pendots, uh, you know, planning for the bridge. But it's been an honor and thank you very much.
I mean, you're doing a good job.
Yeah, you have, you're, I think you were kind of baptized by fire, weren't you?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Everything's going well, other than a sinkhole.
We didn't know it was bad luck because every day, the first week it snowed.
Yes, and today brought a sinkhole, so.
So there, yeah, the alley's caving in.
Right, so, but we're taking care of everything and.
All right, um, moving on, we, now, we've been, had a request to look at evaluating changes in how we handle rental property. And I'm not sure whether the council is interested in looking at now, you know, registering tenants or whether they're looking, interested in, in doing inspection of apartments. I'm really not sure what council is thinking.
I'm not sure we, we know what we're thinking, simply because, I mean, I've been reading in the paper about some municipalities that adopted ordinances and I sent it to Zach. I know there was one that was being challenged somewhere.
Yeah, it's, it's been challenged. Various municipalities are being challenged on different regards. Usually by the landlords feeling like their, their rights are being infringed upon. So there has been some discussion with council doing some sort of regulation on these properties that we, we know exactly what's going on and make sure they're not decoding things of that nature. But really, before we started doing any work on it and doing, doing the research and the light work, we wanted council's input to see if it was something that they were even interested in doing.
And one thing to think about is along with the, I mean, whether you're looking at inspection or whether you're just looking at registering. There are probably a number of renters that are out there, but we don't know of. And therefore, we're not getting the appropriate taxes. So, but we are missing some tax money, I'm sure.
I, I think at the very least, we need registration.
Let's see, you're, you're missing probably tax money.
Okay, I think at the very least, we need registration. And I, and I think, I'd like to see there be some criteria created by which we can do inspections. Anne, what are your thoughts? I mean, you're the one that does the discussion, if I could. Pardon me?
I'd love to do inspections.
What about that property code that you did before?
I, I can't inspect unless I'm invited by the tenant or the owner.
The problem that we continuously run into is, is a lot of these places where the people are living in less than desirable conditions, their rent is so low that they're afraid to complain because if they complain, then they'll be kicked out and they won't have anywhere to live. So, you know, our goal wasn't to make that happen, but our goal was to make sure that the rental properties that we have in the city are within the code and that, and the people are living in conditions that are, you know.
Yeah, well, one of the issues that you'll run into as well is, is that there, there are landlords that aren't maintaining the property appropriately and it's hard to get a hold of them. They're, they're out of town. So when you do the registration process, you then have an easier way to contact these landlords and you have a process to try to remediate and get the zoning with violations.
When we brought this up one other time, we had a vote load of landowners that were upset. I mean, I guess if you're maintaining your property, you have to be upset about, I mean, I don't get it. I, I guess they're afraid that we'll nintick or something like that.
Well, that and, and some of them will always pitch onto the well, if there's a fee attached to it, why should I have to pay more money?
Right.
So that's, that's some of the other feedback that you're going to have is that you're, you're going to want your registration or inspection process to include a fee that, you know, is reasonably calculated to recover your costs for the work that the clerical and the zoning work that's done to follow through with the terms of ordinance or resolution.
Do you think you need a fee for just registration?
I mean, it depends on how council wants the budget for these items because there is going to be, I'm sure there's a, a good deal of landlord tenant properties in the city. So it's going to take a lot of clerical work.
Yeah, I guess my, 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 I guess if, if a fee is minimal, I don't want to, I mean, if there's too high of a fee, then it's just very people from doing.
Yeah, I mean, some of the fees that you'll see, you know, maybe forty or fifty dollars. I mean, you really need to look at the, what you want.
And is it a one-time registration fee?
I, I think you would want to do it every year and have them reregister every year because the tenants will change things of that.
So it could be, it could be one fee for the initial registration and a lesser fee if they renew every year.
Perhaps if it's a renewal with no change.
I'm sure there's some out there.
Yes.
So I guess what you're asking us is, is do we want you to start looking at those?
Right, is that something?
And come into us with some suggestions on it. Are you guys interested in rental and inspection?
And the other thing with the fee, like, that's a source of income for them. So they can figure that out in the lease or whatever they're going to do could be included in the deposit or they can just put it flat out in their lease.
Right, or they could.
So it could offset from the landlord anyway to the renter.
Yeah, they could add their, they could add five dollars a month to the rent that they cover.
There are some communities that they only inspect the apartment when there's a change in occupancy. You know, instead of saying them annual basis or every six months or whatever, when the tenant leaves, a new tenant comes in, before that tenant comes in, they do the inspection. And that way you know at least at that point in time, the building is in good shape. Now, if the tenant's there for five years, you don't know.
I mean, there are some that have passed the test, but court challenges, correct?
Yeah, so it's not a, it's not a dead end from the start. It's just you have to be careful.
So we're, we're interested in both registration and inspection. Am I right, county?
Yeah. I think registration first and then inspection. I think registration is what we need here, so.
Well, I think we want the ordinance to be both on those two.
You lose us some tax money, so if there's an opportunity there to pick up these people that's just transients. You know, they come in for a year or two and we don't know.
So what we can do is start the research process and see exactly what we can do, how we can do it, why, things of that nature. From there, I can bring more information and we can decide how to go.
Rosie?
Yes?
If you do have ordinance with registration, it's important that, that you outline in the ordinance that if they don't register.
There's a penalty.
It's a penalty more than the registration itself.
Okay, that's a good point.
Because if you don't, they're just not going to register.
Okay, that's a good point.
All right, moving on, we have received three bids for the street stripper. And, um, and ask council to award the love that are.
What's the number?
The, which number, for the street stripper or for the finance?
For what this week, this week, this week?
Two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, two hundred and two, one, one, five, two, four.
Holy, know that.
And it's not, but it's free though.
Is it pretty?
It's pretty up with, some probably worse.
Do you like it?
Yes, yes, it's a very nice piece of women.
I went up for it, Mike kept showing it to me. He was so proud of it.
Well, it's certainly something that we need.
And the, the financing is about two point seven, a little bit. So it's pretty good. We're going to do it for five years.
Okay.
And it is in the budget.
Okay.
All right, um, let's see, we want to start advertising, uh, let's start advertising more experience for taking applications for the part-time employees. It's also in the budget. The use of that employee will actually help reduce our overtime costs.
Okay.
And, okay, but next is the, you know, Bongware of the Greenwell. I'm sorry for my error.
Carroll Greenwell.
Greenwell.
That's I'm over it.
No, Bongware and the Greenwell, it's like, that is a good name. But she's, this is typical, we do every year, it's a, she's asking for a whole harmless agreement for the Fourth of July for, so it's dark. All right, next, any questions?
No.
Next is land development for Clearview Credit Union, but she didn't have to speak by anybody.
What's Clearview Credit? It was kind of metal. They were down there.
Oh, okay.
They changed to Clearview and they have an empty lot beside them on the corner, where their parking also is, but the top of the lot's just grass. They're going to put an ATM machine in there and a park with benches and trees and bushes and a new sign. I have a drawing here. Can you look at it? It's actually really nice. But the ATM is enclosed in a eight-by-eight building with White House Company Land Development.
Okay.
Commercial on.
They already do some of it?
Yeah, they do.
The layout is very, yeah. There's already parking here and they're going to see. They have a lot of ways to, the ATM can be here and benches and.
That's not true.
Does it have to go through, um, it'll go to plan now?
Perhaps did they do the pre-run before planning?
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to plan.
Good, thanks, Anne.
Okay, the next three items are list members, um, we think they want to, uh, selling some police, you know, I think the police department is selling police equipment.
As soon as she starts making a little. I can't care as it is.
What are you selling? What are all you selling?
We have probably 200 sets of uniforms, uh, used, secondhand, that with the old patches on, things like that, that we probably could sell.
To move.
Yeah.
A lot of departments that are changing.
I mean, like, no, no, it has to be a department, right?
Well, number one, you, you take the patches off first.
Okay, I know, but you know, there's a lot of these crazy people that are pretending they're policemen and.
No, it's, it's for police departments, other departments. They're changing to black, you know.
Right.
We've already been approached by Mount Pleasant with interest in, uh, last, uh, last year, the chief from, or assistant chief from Mount Pleasant asked me about it.
Yeah.
And I mean, they're not doing any good sitting in that room downstairs. The bicycles also, we don't, we don't utilize the bicycles any longer. They should be sold to the department that can use them.
Yeah.
They're just getting ruined down there. I mean, we, we probably take in about 20 or 30, uh, bicycles every six months and they just pack them in it and the police bicycles are entwined in with those and they're just getting ruined. Uh, plus all the bike gear, the helmets, things like that. I mean, we could turn that stuff over and put it back into the budget. I mean, I, I think it, it, we should do that.
I'm very curious about number 13, so hurry up and get there.
The twelve is the, many organizations, he's, uh, wants to disclose his records from 1995.
Okay.
All right, last thing is again, a, a, there's a joint agreement with St. Vincent College.
The county college has two elements.
Is that the same thing we talked about?
No. I explained to Zach already what it is, that St. Vincent is, is obtaining a grant for a, for a person to start sexual, uh, sexual assault response and training for students, things like that. Um, what it is, is they want a liaison or a person from the La Trobe Police Department to participate in it. And to participate in it, you have to attend four meetings and a training, which they pay for everything. They pay the salaries. The budget is, Zach and Wayne have a copy of the budget. Uh, the state police are in agreement and the reason they need La Trobe to be on board is because of the off, off-campus housing and commuter students from the city of La Trobe that if they're involved in a sexual assault, that there's a protocol with the Blackburn Center, which state mandated anyhow, we have to offer those services to them as far as the Blackburn Center goes and things like that. But, uh, women's shelter.
And do you have an officer that you would run that or would they volunteer?
I'm going to do it.
You're doing it?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Because it is a commitment and, um, because of my, you know, my schedule, the way my schedule is, it would be much easier for me to do it than to try to fill somebody in.
That's good. Wayne? Have we heard anything from the state on the R cap?
Wait till, you're going to steal my thunder for next meeting, but that's okay.
Good news?
Yeah, good news.
The way you said yes, I thought, oh, geez.
Now, the, you, now you stole my thunder.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. We have been tentatively approved, the first final, the first review was passed and there'll be a check for 975,000 dollars coming to the city of La Trobe in, in probably about eight weeks or so.
Oh my God. Thank you, Kim Warren.
I don't care who it is. Whatever it is, it'll look nice in bank account.
It's been a long time, it's been what, how long was, how long did we need that garage?
It's been, you can figure what, three, four years?
Yeah, yeah.
It's been two years since that, since that's been here.
Oh, that's obvious, okay.
And something has gone on in that, I should split my thunder for that one, there's still something else there. The, uh, the, I've been approached to look at bonding, redoing our bonds. Uh, I've been told that tentatively there's an opportunity to save, even after the rather expensive processing cost, we could save about 100 to 100 million dollars. So, and, and they're frightened of fact that, um, the last year of the bond, you're up about 400,000 percent. And right now you could do about three and a third right now for that year. Overall, you go.
Is there a penalty for us doing that so soon?
No, they're callable now. And that's, that's why I believe, I've done two calls because everybody watches.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm talking to another gentleman tomorrow, but, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I guess I was looking for council's opinion. I mean, to me it seems like a.
A no-brainer.
Well, I, I, but you know, I would.
As long as we're not extending the time, Jimmy.
No, and there's a couple of choices you can do, um, which maybe the, the finance committee would want to sit down and meet with these people. Might not be a bad idea. But you can do a couple of, you can shorten it by two years. You could, uh, take the money that you save each year and then it would be a reduction to the same sort of budget. Or you could take your money upfront and, you know, that's, that's, those are all the options that, uh, opportunity you have to look at.
How long was that one?
Thirty-four, that's the last year.
Two thousand?
We've been down for a while, we.
I'm still a century behind, I'm not many. Yeah, twenty thirty-four is the last, uh, last year. But, but as I said, it's, you know, it's, it's an opportunity to reduce, to reduce the overall cost by about a percent. You know, it's in that area where it's attractive, is it mine one, no? I mean, we redid it, we saved about 400,000 dollars.
That's a mil and a half.
Well, I'm saying.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is two mils.
I'm not going to turn down 20 grand, but I'm saying it's, it's an opportunity. I, I just wanted to make sure council was comfortable going through that process because there's a lot, there's a cost.
Just paid for half of our streets we go with now. More than half of our streets.
Sure, sure. Or we can pay for the next payment.
Or you can buy some salt trucks.
Well, we have a salt truck in the budget.
I know.
Just remember, this is going to be, that hundred and twenty-five thousand you're going to save is over the life of the month.
I know.
Maybe like a tenth of it.
I know. Well, we'll finance the trucks.
You can get it upfront. You can, you can get that savings upfront, but you're right, you're saving everything.
Okay, um.
We're already going to executive session, uh, to discuss legal.
Yeah, before we do that, I have a couple of things. First of all, thanks, Jerry, for covering for me for the council meeting. I had a new baby girl on February 7th. He's a granddaughter, it's not my own. I had a new baby granddaughter. Yeah, don't I? I'm in the Guinness Book of Records too. And, um, and then I went out last week to, um, help my daughter mom when my son went back to work. So I appreciate Jerry definitely. I heard you did a great job.
Short beat.
Oh no, you set a standard now, huh?
And mostly just talked about the great parking spot.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, we talked, um, at the beginning of the year about setting up new committees and, um, we came up with, um, six committees. And, and I, I told you guys what you wanted to work on. And, um, so what I have here is the six committees are healthcare, parking, finance, police and public safety have put together, personnel and events. I don't know if you guys are aware, um, that one of the commitments that, that we made, because the Banana Split Festival last year was pretty much strictly handled by the chamber and it was kind of very overwhelming. We talked with the chamber about, um, creating a position that was within the chamber that would be an events person that would handle events in the city of La Trobe. We would commit some funding, which we did, put in the budget. There was some grants, I believe, from some foundations and the chamber was putting in some money. Um, and so all that kind of has happened. I'm, I'm not sure that they've announced who that person's going to be yet, but, but I'm pretty sure that's coming down the pike soon, so, um, it's going to be like a full-time person that's going to be working on all the events, because of Banana Split being the biggest one. So I thought it would be good, we never had an events committee, but we have an events committee and those people in that committee then can also, you know, work, work with that person in some of these events, so. So the way it lined up here is Julie has, has agreed to be on the healthcare committee. She's the only one, so, you know, I'll serve on that with Julie.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, nobody else volunteered and I try, I'm trying to not like appoint people. I'm trying to get people to gravitate to where they're comfortable. Technically, because of the sunshine law, and the mayor's supposed to be a, I don't know what you call it, what's the word? what's the word?
Ex officio?
Ex officio of every committee. But if there's three people on a committee and the mayor's on the committee, then it makes...violates the sunshine law, right? More or less?
I believe so.
Okay, well, that's what I was always told. At any rate, so there's a couple of committees here where I have three volunteers, and that's okay. I don't care. I'll just stay out of them. I'm not that much of a control freak, so, and I trust the group that we have. So under parking, and I think this is going to be a big committee this year, because we really want to take a good, long look at our parking situation as a whole and how we do our monthly permits and all that kind of stuff. You know, can we do...is there a way we can maybe do this online so people don't have to come stand at the window every month and stuff like that? So Eric and Stuffy and Jerry have volunteered for that committee, so you guys can meet with Wayne and talk about how you want to...how you want to do it is up to you. All I'm going to do is ask at every meeting if you have an update, if there's anything to report as you go along. Some months there won't be, and some months there will be, so. Finance committee, once again, Julie's my loan board for finance, but I'll serve on that with you. And if anyone else is interested in healthcare or finance, that's fine. Police and public safety, I have Eric and Stuffy. Personnel, Tricia, and I can't think of who in the heck is John, but now I know that's you. So I'm like, who's John? And then events is Tricia, Jack and Jerry. So Wayne, I'll give this to you so that you know. And, you know, probably not at the March meeting. I won't even ask because we're just getting started. But probably the April meeting, when we do committee reports, if you have anything to report, where you're at, what you're working on, stuff like that. I know that Wayne was anxious to get started on parking.
Yeah, I think it's a...I mean, obviously with the parking garage, losing money every year, it's an opportunity to...I don't know. I think there's some opportunities, but, you know, obviously it's a decision that, you know, council... Patton, you know, I don't know if the finance committee wants to be, it's just in fact Julie. If you want to be involved in the Capitol, you know, talk to the section about the voting.
The problem Julie has is she's, you know, it's during the day. She's not always behind. And now Tuesday, Thursday night.
Okay. Well, I have two gentlemen that both want to, you know, present some information. And, you know, I prefer they present to other people because I haven't done this before, but I like to have other people here.
Yeah, I'll try.
So, like, you said four o'clock is not available?
I could possibly get here at four if I'm in my Grisburg, I'm in Pittsburgh.
Okay. We'll figure it out. We'll set it by your schedule, and then that way... I've got a gentleman meeting tomorrow, so they're both going to be, you know, anxious to meet.
I mean, just feel free to just send me the email. I'm always on it. The other thing I think is...the other thing that might be helpful is if you give them maybe, if you can give them a couple of bids, what you think you might be able to, and they can search that.
Alex, let me talk to the one gentleman tomorrow. Also, don't forget, we're going to have, and I'm not sure the date because Pendott hasn't gotten back to me yet. We're going to try and have a meeting, including a meeting in the morning and meeting in the afternoon. Meeting in the morning with the design committee to sit down, design committee, and then let the rest of them have a very good look. The afternoon would be more for the police, and we're looking at the detour. I'm going to have, like, Brian, and I might get Zach from City Grove over there to come if he's available, because those are the two that are going to be impacted the most.
A word enough. The design, some people from the design committee of community and visualization there, too. So that's the focus group they were talking about, Pendott meeting. Those of you that were there, they're great, you know, as far as athletics, you know, working with us on the kind of light beam on and things like that, so kind of pretty exciting. Just a reminder to everybody in your packet that the Latrobe Volunteer Fire Department's annual dinner is Saturday, March fifth. I think all of us, not one of you. And they're asking that we RSVP to stop me by February twenty-sixth. I think that's all I have. Does anybody have anything?
For Jerry and Jack and I, I already filled out the data, but I'll tell him we're on the events committee so that he knows.
Okay, that'll be great.
And I see what, you know...
I mean, I know that Wednesday?
Yeah. Wednesday is a Banana Split hot clock, is a Banana Split meeting.
Meeting, meeting.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Yeah.
Wednesday, next Monday.
Wednesday. Today is Monday. Wednesday.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, it is.
I've got my calendar, right?
I told my calendar, too, and Alan just sent me the email. Why? Hold on a minute. It says right here, meeting reminder, Wednesday, February twenty-fourth.
I know.
This Wednesday, February twenty-fourth, at five p.m. on City Council. Zach, you need to investigate. Let me know if I can. I'm going to be there, and I'll be the board person, but that's maybe someone aren't voting on anything.
You're not making a decision.
No.
You've got to make something, make a decision.
No. Okay, so it doesn't make you, it doesn't matter, yeah? Wednesday, yeah. You won't be there?
No, I can't. Not everybody.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else? We'll go to executive session. Hey, um, two...